Say, did you say the same thing?
Just in a different one. Thank you.
So, next motion. Uh, is that, or the next item is the Highway Department?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to talk to you about the Office Manager, Highway Office Manager's salary. So, just a quick recap of last, earlier this year, we changed her Office Manager's job description to reflect the additional duties that she was doing, starting in December of 2020. We requested in January a $3 salary increase. In March, it was finally approved as a $1 salary increase. But the 7% increase annually by her employee was based on her rate for her increase. So with the 7%, she's, she'll, next year, she'll only make 16 cents more than what she's making now per hour. In essence, you've taken away her increase from last year. So, just some of the things she's doing. She's doing the additional duties, processing payroll, attendance, daily worksheets and schedules, got physicals for 27 employees, processes 30 to 50 claims a month, and handles, answers daily phone calls, especially after a weather event and inside work to improve. She's the acting DRC, which is the employee responsible charge for in-depth funded projects, federal projects. And then submits quarterly reports to end up for all federal highway grants, which includes inspections. If we have any other projects, that includes those, submitting annual community crossings application, submitted 75 extension grant application that we just did. So I'm, I'm just requesting that her 7% annual increase goes on top of what she's currently making, which would bring her, she's currently making 1763. Add 7% to that to be 1886, as opposed to 1779, 1779, which is 16 cents increase over last year. This is a total of-
Can you repeat that a minute? Start it here, like that.
She's currently making 1763. If we increase that by 7%, it becomes to 1886. The 2022 salary ordinance has her going from 1763 to 1779 per hour. So this is a $2,225 difference over a year. In order to keep our Highway Department's salary ordinance that balance for all, and all the employees, I'm requesting, proposing that you reduce my salary from 7% to 4% and then transfer, increase her salary, and then there'll be a net positive to that whole
To, to address your first issue of how we retracted the mid-year raises, went back to January 1st and did the 7% there, that's how we treated everybody. Everybody that had received mid-year raises, we treated exactly the same. We retracted those mid-year raises, went back to January 1st, paid, and gave 7% on top of that.
I understand that, but why, why go through trying to get an increase if you're just gonna take it away the next year?
Well, it wasn't taken away.
No.
Basically. She's working for 16 cents an hour.
She got, she got paid that whole dollar an hour for an entire year. And, and, so that, that was her gain. And then she got the same raise as everybody else.
We have to balance all the employees in the county, and we have to try to treat them relatively the same. I don't know the repercussions. I wouldn't know to see the repercussions we would have had as a body if we would have given a mid-year raise in March or April or May or even June and then tacked on the full 7% on that raise. That would have been double the raise to that person, that person for a year. And by trying to justify that with every other employee that didn't happily get their department head or office manager to believe they were getting the raise. So I, I would not have wanted that argument or that discussion with anyone. I think this was the most fair way to go about doing it. We looked at it two different ways. We said, okay, what was the mid-year raise percentage-wise? We're looking at 7% across the board. A mid-year raise according to 2.5%. We're looking at 7, so let's give them 4.5% more to make the, to the 7%. Or retract the mid-year raise, go back to January 1st, and get 7% from there. So honestly, that was the only logical, fair way of trying to do that size of the raise for them.
I agree.
Do you have anything else to add? And genuinely thank you for your work with the department. I mean, I've heard nothing but tremendous feedback back there, which is what I'm really appreciative of. Is there a motion that anybody has to make relative to the Highway Salary Ordinance? Thank you. So are we going to do additional to that?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh. Judge. I'm done, so, for the morning, so I can gladly wait in front of everybody else. No, we, your, your item was first on the agenda, so. I feel guilty, sorry, except for you. So I think from last time, we're talking about the request for the transfer for 4,400, is that right? So the information that I provided you last time, and I told Ms. Myers after I left that I was informing you incorrectly, I don't want to say lied, there were chairs that were delivered. So if we want to call this chair gate or scandal, there are chairs that are delivered. However, I would like to amend that transfer from 4,400 to 286194. I've got a breakdown for both of those numbers. 286194, I think that's in line with the, the claims that have also been submitted. So there were chairs in the amount of 119, excuse me, 111996, those were four chairs. And then the 174198 remaining balance was for furniture in the middle office where the Coroner's straighter said. So those are transfers from those two. But we had a couple of other quotes from stationers, which is the provider we all use, their supplier rather. Most of them were, one was 2,900, whatever, so we went with the 1741. So that total is 286194. So one set of office furniture in her office and then four chairs for appropriation.
Motion to transfer 286194.
And that's staying out of transfer experiments?
Does that-
Yes.
Yes.
Not the chances.
Yes.
What was the name of the transfer, Matthew?
286194.
28.
Also.
Motion by, I'm sorry, is that Paul? Motion by Paul Reiter, seconded by Tracy Martin. Just wants to get the minutes.
That's fine.
I didn't hear what you said. Instant anxiety.
For discussion purposes of chairs, I know that is kind of like a funny matter, but it's not funny. But $300, 279 for an office chair, I think that's very reasonable and appropriate. I think we're moving to $1,000 and 1,200, we've kept that on the board for the rest.
They've been, they've got their samples and-
I'm impressed that they came from a local, like, stationers and that sort of that price.
We're trying to do most of our stuff. Thanks for allowing me to supplement that, provide you with half your numbers. I appreciate it.
Okay, so we didn't vote?
No, we haven't. So is there any discussion on the motion to, or furniture? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same sign, motion here. Thank you, everybody. Do you need me for any of the others? Just this one? Thank you. Thanks, Judge. This is the, skip forward and backward section. All right, so we have one additional that we have not discussed yet for the Coroner's Office, $12,000 for autopsies. Kristen, can you speak to this? Yeah, so that's approved.
Yeah, we're done. Yeah, so when I requested that, we had, just had, not hit with like eight calls in three weeks. So we went from nothing this year to like, so we're at 33 calls right now. I, somehow, we were off in the Otter's Office, we went through it, so there's still two bills that we can come off of that. So actually, I only have enough for like two or three autopsies to be able to do this in the last year, so.
Between now and January 1st.
That one is already-
So there's 6,000 outstanding bills?
Yep.
Her, her budget status report was not, was not coinciding with what she had. And we checked it in, and the budget status is correct.
So you want $6,000 to cover bills that are sitting there, and you're thinking $6,000 to chase you out of there? Well, I originally had thought I had enough for like six this month, but then that didn't happen because we were off. So I have enough for, like I said, it was two or three left this year, so.
She has bills that are out there.
Out, yeah.
That she has, you know, that she's been holding on-
But she just said, well, she has $6,000 for bills out there.
Yes.
So you're, you're contemplating $6,000 more bills coming.
But she also had $6,000 there.
Well, it was a, it was a, yeah, I forget.
Well, that wasn't included in her, her section that was in ours. We paid. Do you understand what I'm saying?
No.
But she was two, she was the 12,000.
I was looking at it, she only needs $6,000.
She needs the 12,000.
No, I'm not in need at all. And we have typically bills, so it can still possibly come in. Well, no, but they can be encumbered, is what I'm saying. If the invoices come, then they can be encumbered till next year. But if you're saying that 12,000 is going to be, you have bills out there sitting.
Correct. But if she encumbers it, it's going to take most of her, what you gave her for next year. See what I'm saying?
So which, which reporting is referencing that is correct?
We're talking about our budget SASH reports that you guys do not see.
Right, but, well, I mean, it should be the same as our reported on the same day.
No. It is, but it's all, your guys' are all combined.
Right, but I look at the Coroner's Office right now.
Okay, you'll have to explain that, I don't know.
So on, this is the November report, so this is through November. There's 3,000 sitting in the account.
That was not true, because we paid two that were from October that had not been paid. And then there was two other bills I had that she couldn't pay till I got the additional because I had not money.
This part is true. We did pay, so those are the right figures. It was just that her figures different, that's why she figured more money, or she should have figured more money instead of less money.
I'm just trying to figure out-
In essence, you're asking for 12,000, you know, with all rates.
We've already spent that state.
But, but there's three sitting in the line.
There's not, because there's bills out. They're already out in the, like, they were after that.
They're in the box to pay. So it's not off of here. They're already in-
So there's $9,000 of that standing?
I don't know how much.
No, she sent two out from that 3,000.
But when?
That's gone. Where's that at that time?
It was done December 6th. It's not on your report, that's why I'm-
So it was, this is correct. So your 3,000, you're saying-
The 11, November is correct.
Why are you shaking your head?
It's correct for November.
December 6th, it's not.
It was correct on this day.
Yes.
Yeah, on November 6th.
Right, so you're saying you, you put, how many, what is the total amount of all the bills?
I'd have to add, I didn't bring my stuff up. I don't know. I can go down and get it.
Motion to fund the autopsy fees for $12,000.
Second. Of a motion by Paul Reiter, seconded by Tracy Martin.
You're either gonna pay it now, or you're gonna drain your budget next year, or we'll do this all over again, so.
Well, I, I'm just trying to figure out what the actual-
You're not gonna, next, next month's reports will be closer.
Right.
But you're not going to, because the bills are sitting out there and are not on the report.
Some of them were paid on December 6th. She's also got some file that she wants to pay by the end of the year. And then-
Yeah, that's all I was asking, what's the total of all of those?
Because our reports aren't two days. I can go grab some. I knew there was a 3,000, I knew there was a 3,000 that was paid. And I knew there was a-
If she, if she's not got any bills, she's not gonna spend it all.
She doesn't need to go grab them.
There's a $5,500 one, I know for an autopsy.
I would assume that when you're on the agenda like this, you bring the information.
Well, I brought it last month when I was here to discuss this, so I just didn't make to grab it. It was my fault, my bad.
Who, who was calling for these autopsies? You or Tippecanoe County?
Both. Tippecanoe does their own. If we transport by MLs and they are pronounced dead over there, they are doing autopsies and they're now billing all the counties that they originated from. Now, I am going through Doug to make sure they originate here, because how do you decide that? To make sure they're justified. But she is, she's billing, we actually got lucky. I mean, they can't do it.
I want to make sure I understand what you just said. If someone is trans, if a body is transported there and confirm, and-
If the ALs takes them and they work them, where do they go there? Then pretty-
They're alive when they leave here.
Yes.
And they get over to St. Carol's, St. E.
They're autopsying everyone.
They're autopsying a lot. Do you have the right to say we got one they're autopsying? Not when we send them? It's not my case. Like, I don't even know half of them until you have the bill.
So once you transport them, they're, to a different county, they're, their case, not your case.
So I just want to throw this out there, and this is off, but if we had our own situation here to handle these, would, and if you, you would be able to control if we got autopsied or we did not, if we had our own station here? Or is that a- This is hospital, so. So you're okay, because we don't have a hospital. Either way, you still are gonna have, and Tippecanoe County says.
How do they determine what they charge us?
The doctors pay.
So they're straight-
They're not, they're not creating, it's the safety I pay for the doctors. It's just, they're being, you know, asking us basically versus- You're not gonna stop us, this is just unfortunate luck of the draw. However many we have passed away, we're gonna have to pay for it. If we have a good year and people don't, then we don't pay for it.
Are they statutory, or they're required to do the autopsies?
No, he is.
They don't pay here.
Do the autopsies, that's up to the coroner, if, if they choose.
Understand the depth generally, yeah?
Isn't it sometimes the family requests?
It's no different than me choosing to do them.
If the family requests it also?
If we are saying they don't require, that we don't feel the need for it, and the family is still waiting one, then it's up to the family paying. But you don't, typically, you don't. I've had one that that almost happened, and we ended up doing it anyways, because of different situations.
You're not a member to the county, can I tell them?
Everything's figured.
You're wrong. I have to say, especially if they know that you're in a pit hole, they're gonna charge what they charge everybody else.
It's also the same.
We actually got lucky, because White County got hit a lot hard for nothing got paid. Do you ever engage in a discussion with them? Do you think maybe you could? I can, literally. They're gonna make up their mind. I mean, I try, maybe, I, I can ask why, but they can perform it with-
Because you just said White County got hit hard, does that mean they're charging different prices?
No, they got a lot more bills for it.
So they do charge the same, every county?
It's just the doctor's fee. It's the doctor's fee that I pay.
It's an independent doctor that does the autopsies.
So that means the same that there's not negotiation, because they're, if they lower one, they're not gonna get it.
Just everything?
Oh, stop. Yeah.
Immortals conversation. Got a question? There's a, a question.
Second question.
He's, he's, did you call for a question, or you say I have a question?
I called.
Oh, there we go. Questions that we called, all those in favor of ending debates.
Aye.
Aye, pose, same sign. Okay, debate is closed. All those in favor of the motion to approve autopsy fees for $12,000, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same sign, motion here. Okay, we are two encumbrances. I have one question for the, what is the Commissioner, our hotline?
American Rescue.
What is that?
American Rescue. Before you, I mean, are you gonna do each one of them?
I'm, it's, we contend in a pink room. So one thing, the Treasurer's second encumbrance for $681,871 has been withdrawn, so.
She received her invoice. I do want to state that I have another one here that, from the Sheriff's Department, it was, came in after I did the agenda, but this is one that needs to be talked about now, not wait till January. It's a merit board, and it's for their pay, but they do not meet, if, I'm wrong, till the 21st?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And so, we would like to encumber that money, the $625, and I have it here.
It's on it, Judge, is that the one listed?
Is it? Oh, I got it on there. How'd I do that? Is that the same one?
Can you relate to what?
Oh, you know.
Shells out.
Sorry, yeah, what's the shell cell? I don't know.
It's totally, it's been, it's been a time.
Make a motion to do all the encumbrances at once.
Second. Motion by Paul Reiter to approve all encumbrances, seconded by Ethan Brown.
I have a discussion with Ms. Sessors. She has an employee that is the maine. So how would we get her paid for her time period?
If I had an idea, is, she just transferred that money. And if it's in the funds, which I'm not gonna do those today, payroll has not been done. I don't understand why, instead of encumbering, which we have, we look-
We've oscillated.
Yes, and we, normally, for salaries, we don't do that, or whatever. And I really don't want to get that started, because then it looks like you're earning more money next year than whatever. But she could go in and correct her payroll and get the vacation part done, because we're going to owe it to her no matter what, whether, you know, she quits on the 29th or the 31st. I mean, you know, so it could be added to her payroll, and we could pay her out her vacation time. It's what it is, it's vacation that has accrued, and what we, she has not taken.
And she would be finalized this year and not have to-
She would be finalized this year, but-
I think that's the motion we're proposing.
She agreed. We're gonna put that on record.
It doesn't mention why.
Yeah, could you please come to my-
That was a proposal.
Do you have one separate?
No, she's already got the not even line.
Yeah, you don't have to, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that if, I-
Can I?
Yep.
Can I ask you a quick question? And this may be a formality, but the Highway Department laying back position for 111,000, we have already agreed to that. I thought that money was already appropriated.
It is, but he needs to encumber it for next year, because everything, we had to start over with our sales disclosure and the deed and things like that, so it just has not been paid yet.
Okay.
That's the only thing. Are you okay with that, Nate?
Is that what you're gonna do then?
Yeah, I want you to change your payroll.
Okay, I can do that. Just for the record, I did get an update from State Board, and they said, she said that it's okay to do the encumbrance, that if you want to do it this way, that's fine. I just don't want to have to wait three weeks to hire-
Oh, it's fine, it's cleaner that way. It's all done this year.
Well, and I'm gonna just go on record to say that's more fair to all their other department heads, because we have to wait. We don't have that option.
Right.
And so if you pay it this year, then she's gonna get it everything.
That's fine.
Got it?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So I'm gonna say withdraw on that one. That'll pay the encumbrance. Do you agree to withdraw it?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. 1746.
Thank you, Nate.
Yep.
Well.
Can I amend my motion to withdraw that 1746, please?
Yes. That's, that was all. Well, yeah, just to clarify, your motion is to pass all encumbrances minus the reassessment for 1746 and the Treasurer's for 68187. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, you guys.
Is there any further discussion on the-
She's rushing it. She's not.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same sign, motion here. Okay, we have a couple things that I didn't get to Beth for the additional business. We budgeted for a transfer to Rainy Day and during the budget hearings, the amount was 820 something, like 800,000 would be inappropriate.
And I know during budget discussions, I think Tim, I don't really have that idea, review the 7%, maybe we could pay her back the amount for transfer Rainy Day. I don't think that's-
Jackie confirmed at the end of the process that everything she gave us was assuming that 800,000 is for the-
And that was turned in, the budget stuff, and for with the-
I, I was just gonna call and say, I don't think it's necessary to pay that.
Yeah, we have put adequate criteria in, so. Okay, a motion by Paul Reiter, did you say? Seconded by Tracy Martin.
And you want this done?
And that's 800,000.
Even?
Yeah, to Rainy Day. Well, I mean, 10% would be the, the number. I mean, we could, you, we could make that motion, 10% of the, but 800 is, isn't easy.
Or be done by the end of the year.
Right. From General Fund, County General, to Rainy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same sign, motion here. Do you, Beth, do you need anything from us in terms of the establishment of the new health care fund? In terms of, all those are in there, but it's not technically a transfer, you know, those-
But it is.
But it, yeah, so I-
I would think that if you're establishing a new fund like that, it's not a grant or anything, that we do need a resolution.
To establish a new fund.
Which could be done-
I thought we did that last time.
Did we, did we have that?
I don't recall. I don't know, Agent. We, we definitely-
Did we have it?
I don't think we're gonna vote for a resolution.
I don't think yes.
I think we did it.
We just, yeah, we can just pass it.
If not, I'll get with him, and then he can have it for your resolution.
So, but do you need us to pa, to, to make a motion to transfer all those funds?
Not if the resolution says to do what I'm supposed to do.
We could restate and just do it, if what, but what is it, you want?
If we do not do an establishment for a new fund, then we would need to do the refund in telling us exactly what we're doing.
And what is the new fund?
The health insurance fund.
We can give a motion to establish a health insurance fund.
I know we did.
Oh, maybe we did.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll just, we can reconfirm, but we need to give Beth the authority to transfer funds.
In health insurance, you can.
And, Tim, in, in January, you're gonna have bills that need to get paid, so you may need to transfer funds early in the year.
I'll make a motion that we help insurance fund is set up, and we give that off, and as I say, to transfer the funds into that to certain agencies.
From health insurance lines.
Right, no, insurance lines, we just, from it.
Second. Second.
A motion by Tracy Martin, and seconded by Paul Ryder to confirm the establishment of the health insurance fund, and to give the auditor the authority to transfer, uh, from health insurance lines, the department's due that. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same side? Motion here.
I, I did lie, I've got, I've got something here. You just sign the inside of the salary ordinance, there's another page, and here is the minutes. And Ethan, you have something in the office by the printer to sign.
And, uh, the last item, um, we have, uh, we have no new members for the next year. Uh, in the last several years, we have held our leadership elections, um, at this meeting, uh, so that Beth doesn't have to call our meetings quarter in January. Um, I am not going to continue my service as the president, and I decided to not do that, so I would, uh, accept nominations, uh, for leadership for, for the twenty twenty-two, uh, year.
I like nominating Scott Air.
Are you doing president and vice president all of it separately, or are you doing it all together?
President, individually. Uh, I want, I do want to say something about the vice president's role. We actually just recently established that, um, that historically really didn't exist, um, and, and about five or six years ago, I think was the first time that it was really established. And, uh, I've thought about it a lot, that that role's kind of flexible. Uh, I think that sometimes the president needs the support of somebody on the council that can help them get to where they want to be, and sometimes the president wants to use that as a person to groom to become, uh, a future leader on the council, and to, to, to go through and learn all of the things. So, uh, it's ultimately the council's decision about how you want to handle that vice president role, but just to, just thinking about practically, I would, I would think that if you're electing a president of this council, that that president should have some autonomy to make, to at least make the first nomination for who they would want to be, uh, their vice president, and so that gives them some, gives them the best chance of success from their perspective, or just how they would like to serve. Uh, that doesn't in any way limit who else can be nominated, but I think that the president should at least have that authority, and, and the newly elected or president-elect shouldn't feel like they can't make a nomination, and, and in fact, I think we should encourage that not, that person to nominate, so that they feel that they have the best chance of being successful in that role. So, kind of take that for what, what you will, it's just my two cents about it. Uh, okay, so to, to go back to the elections. I have a nomination. By Ethan Brown, uh, Scott Ayers, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so nominations for president. Scott Ayers. Hey, are there any?
Second, please.
Oh, nomination, okay, Scott Ayers. Okay, so this is nominated, uh, by Ethan Brown, seconded by, uh, Dr. Stock. Okay, are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Tim Ratcliffe.
I have a nomination for Tim Radcliffe. By Tracy Martin, is there a second? I'll second. Seconded by Josh, please. Okay, uh, is, uh...
You have to show the campaign.
Okay, so, uh, in keeping with how we have done nominations lately, uh, Scott Ayers was nominated first, we will, um, ask for positive votes, yay votes for Scott, and then we will ask for yay votes for Tim Radcliffe.
And you can only vote for one?
And you can only vote for one, so, so, and I will, I will take a.
From Chicago?
Yeah. I will take a roll call vote, so that we can, oh, actually, that'll be easier, so I'll, I will just call for a roll call, and then we'll put the appropriate votes into, uh, each person's calendar. Uh, is there any debate? All right, uh, so I will call roll, uh, Radcliffe?
And that's for Scott Ayers?
Uh, no, I'm, so I will call a roll call, and they will vote for either Ayers or Radcliffe.
Okay. I vote Tim Radcliffe.
I vote Scott Ayers. I vote Scott.
I vote Scott Ayers.
Radcliffe? I, I, I was in. Okay, so the president's role will be occupied by Scott Ayers. Do we have nominations for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Tracy Martin for vice president. Second.
So I have... Tracy Martin. Tracy Martin. Nominate Tracy.
I don't.
Ethan Brown, and who's seconded? Dr. Stocker?
No.
No, Paul Ryder.
Paul.
Paul Ryder. Okay, I have a nomination of Tim Radcliffe.
Yeah, I'll second.
Uh, do you have seconded? Dr. Stocker, seconded by Tracy Martin. Okay. So I will call roll call for vice president, any discussion? Oh, sorry, thank you. Any discussion on vice president? All right. Radcliffe.
Tracy Martin.
Martin. Oh, wait, it's Radcliffe. Brown?
Uh, Tracy Martin. Tracy.
Okay, you, you vote Tracy? Tim? Uh...
You tell them about Jim.
I forgot that, that just occurred to me as I didn't ask what, what I just asked for was what the vice, what the president's, uh, or if the president, uh, would prefer to have. A, uh...
Their opinion.
Their opinion.
I have been extremely impressed with those individuals, but I think they have, I've got a wonderful job here at the house. I probably definitely impressed with Chris's ability to look at that and decide when, and when he notices that he might be more important. That would be a, a big addition to my office.
So, I'll, I'll vote Martin. All right, so the... Vice president will be Tracy Martin for twenty twenty-two. Okay, is there any other business for the council?
I just got a quick question. So Scott, am I gonna be sending you the appointment letter to the MAC board, since it's just been re-eratified?
Yes, it will take place after January one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd just like to comment, I'm a staff at the health department, I am on the board of health, and, as you know, I'm pretty well close. Our nurse is, has rheumatoid arthritis, and can hardly move, and is not able to be in the office at all. The very poor special we had a gentleman, he was by color, I believe that he was subject to infection and all, and Brad is kind of filling in, the secretary left, so it's a moment where, uh, no luck. We've got an excellent health officer, and not the only backer from local, our, and she might have cooperated, uh, with the company, before the health department, uh, or the health board, excuse me, restructuring, where we'll have. Ocon secretary, office manager, so we need, uh, one or two apart, I guess. We have concerned, uh, health, plenty over here, not with color.
Yeah, no central nurses.
They, they have been doing the immunization, immunization for children and all, but we haven't forgotten.
So are they redoing the job description for the office manager, and has that been taken with the commissioners yet?
No, 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 we haven't got that one yet. Haven't gone before, before, uh, which means nearly yet.
Oh, so it's gonna be a while.
Joyce is working from home, the commissioners did approve that, and then it'll be reviewed.
We go first to hear.
Yeah, and then it'll be reviewed again, in case there's no one there.
Any other business for the council?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, Ethan Brown, seconded by Paul Ryder, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Time to start shopping? It's rapid issue, waiting for Christmas Eve, so. My dad and I, we close at eight o'clock, we go, we go shopping.
Oh, do you?